We'll call the meeting to order. It's the Monday, June 13th, 2022, meeting of the Radnor Board of Commissioners. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing and endless straw.
I will also make note that we met earlier tonight in executive session to discuss some legal matters. And before we get into the meeting, I'd like to ask Commissioner Myers to say a few words.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to announce the passing of a former Ward Two Commissioner. Clint Sudabek, age eighty-four, passed away on June 4th. He was the Ward Two Commissioner for twenty-three and a half years, and according to his son, just loved Radnor Township. So I just wanted to memorialize him as little as I can here, but as large as I can up there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our opening item is the presentation of the Emlyn-Tonnell Cuttership Model. T M A.
Hi. Microphone? Okay, it's working. All right, I'm going to invite everybody up who's part of the presentation. I think there might be Bill as well can come on up. I also want to invite down Commissioner Fahy. Coast Guard Cuttership Commissioning. We're commissioning our own model ship here tonight, actually. For those of you who don't know, Emlyn-Tonnell's legacy was really cemented by the Coast Guard in October when there was a commissioning of an actual U.S. Coast Guard ship back in October. A lot of us standing up here had the opportunity to take part in that with the Coast Guard officials, which was really an amazing event. Not sure why I'm going in and out, but anyways. So tonight's presentation is of model ship, and with that, it really has come a great partnership led by Sports Legends of Delaware County Museum Curator and Director Jim Vankoski. So I'm going to hand the mic over to him. I don't want to steal his thunder. I know he wants to talk a lot about this relationship he's...
It will be very short, but I'm going to unveil this right away. And we have the model. We have the model builder here, John Buoc. John Buoc is a lifelong Delaware County resident, graduate of Monsignor Bonner High School, and a graduate of Villanova. Baseball player, his old coach Phil Bedago's here at Villanova, and also was a Garrett Hill resident, I believe. And John's wife Linda also is here to take part in celebrating this decision. But I just, this is such a wonderful addition. I said, "John, how long did this take?" He said, "A hundred and twenty-eight hours, give or take an hour." Most of us up here were fortunate enough to see the real ship, you know, when it was commissioned, and it's exactly the same. So John is donating this ship to the Sports Legends of Delaware County Museum, and we'll have it on display in this room, outside, or upstairs, or someplace, period, as long as Radnor Township Commissioners allow us to be here. Very thankful that we have this partnership between community and Radnor Township Municipality. So really, thank you very much for allowing us to display. One good turn deserves another. We have Bill Ohr, who's a Radnor Township resident, and he would like to present John with...
Yes, John, I'd like to give you a replica of the Emlyn-Tonnell statue that's right out here in front, and for all that you've done for the museum and for the township. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it very much. That's a huge surprise. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. No, just that it was an honor. The more I got to know Mr. Tonnell in building this, he touched a lot of hearts, and it was a real honor for me to be able to do this. Thank you.
It's a great model, named after a great man. I will begin the meeting tonight with, as we always do, with public participation. As I open the meeting, I know that there are people here to comment on an agenda item that we have put to the top of the business agenda so that we can hear from you, so that we can hear from all folks who want to make public comment. Right now in the meeting, we have open public comment. You can come up and speak about any issue, including the issue relating to abortion, but at the time that we are going to address that particular issue, we will also allow for public comment on every item that we vote on. So you can choose to speak now at the beginning of the meeting, or you can hold your comments to the, we have a little bit of business before we will get to the issue that I think some of you are here to speak on. So with that, I am calling for public participation. And please, when you do come to the mic, many of you know this, if you could state your name and address clearly for the minutes, we keep comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I raise my finger to let you know you have sixty seconds left, and at five minutes, I ask you to please conclude your comments. And that goes for any issue and any public comment time during the meeting. So with that...
Sarah Billings, 29 Garrett Avenue. I'd like to ask a question about, under consent, Agenda H, Resolution 2022-76, the Radnor Township Police Department requests to purchase one AWE Ford Explorer marked patrol vehicle, five vehicles scheduled to be replaced in 2021. I have a very simple question. Has there been any consideration made to purchasing either a hybrid, plug-in hybrids, or EV vehicles for this? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bree Truby, 360 Yorkshire Road in Bryn Mawr. I'm actually just here to formally invite all of you guys to the Garrett Hill Rosemont Fourth of July Parade, which will be Monday, on July 4th, so not to confuse anyone this year. We have the, as most of you know and have participated in it, and I thank you and the Township for your continued support of the parade. This year, we'll gather at Rosemont Business Center at 9:30. We invite the community to come and decorate bikes, wagons, dress up for the theme of, you know, Fourth of July, and there are prizes for all those who participate. Opening ceremonies start at 10:45 a.m. at Flippin Bailey's. The parade route goes down several streets through Ward Three. And then we have, this year, we are bringing back the Party in the Park, which has activities for all ages, and there'd be a dunk tank, spin art, slides, you name it. And it's really a great community event, and so I just wanted to quickly come and remind everyone it's coming up, and hope you are able to attend. Thank you.
Hello, I am Stephen Malkovich of 816 Mill Road, Bryn Mawr, PA. I'm here to speak against ordinance number 2020-07, amending Chapter 67 to provide enforcement limitations regarding the ban of certain reproductive health services. I'd like to remind the Commission that as those who live in the greater Philadelphia area, under the shadow of Kermit Gosnell and what has occurred there, that the limitation of investigation and government services into illegal activities regarding reproductive access has led to immeasurable and irreparable harm, both to the life of women in the area, as well as to their unborn children, and to urge the Commission to reconsider their position. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is James Ask. I live at 104 Buckingham Drive. Straighten the mic? Yeah. Don't worry about it. So I'm here to support amending the zoning ordinance as, I was at a previous meeting. I have a garage capture project looking to convert unusable garage space for parking, it's really not appropriate for parking, to living space. Again, our neighborhood, my street, there are fourteen homes, there are only four homes left that still have a garage, none use it for parking. And if you zoom out into our neighborhood, you know, ninety-one homes, and again, there are only eleven homes that still have a garage, and none of them use it for parking. So again, really appreciate the passing of this ordinance. Thank you.
Margo Giuliano, 103 Valley Forge Terrace. I'm here to speak against the ordinance limiting police ability to enforce the law with regard to abortion. I think that that's a mistake on many levels. If a pregnant woman is killed, and the baby dies, if they both die, the perpetrator is charged with two counts of murder. If a young woman has a child and lets it die, she is charged with murder. But there's a moral disconnect here where we think it's a woman's right to choose to allow a doctor to kill the life within her, or to allow her to make that decision. That's the basic crux of the matter, and life does begin, as we discussed the last time, as with a seed, as soon as you fertilize the seed, as soon as the seed begins to grow, there's life. Whether or not it looks like the final product, it is still human life. That being said, going beyond that, there's also a moral disconnect where, we just said the Pledge of Allegiance. We're vowing allegiance to our country, but we're not even letting our police officers fulfill the oath that they commit to in upholding the laws. And I think that that's a grave mistake as well. I feel that we're abdicating responsibility. I think it's nice to say we're giving a woman a right to choose, and if you don't have this right, it's not really a right to choose murder. We're not allowed to make that choice, and police officers should be able to protect us from somebody who comes in and makes bad decisions and hurts women in the name of doing something that is considered acceptable. I just don't see any way at all that you can ask our fine men in blue, and women in blue, to not uphold the laws. And how can you make a law that probably isn't going to be legal in and of itself? I don't feel like you're representing me. I was at the last meeting. Many people spoke against this, many people. I don't see how you're representing us in this township. I don't see how you're supporting women. In my opinion, you're not. There's a lot of stuff we can do to support women. We can walk with them when they need help, when they're in bad situations where they need someone to care about them, to give them, sometimes it's as simple as getting food. Sometimes it's just giving them your phone number and letting them talk to you. Sometimes it's buying diapers because they don't have enough money. But whatever it is, there's a lot you can do, and sometimes it's just saying, "I care about you," and opening that door. I also disagree with the premise that this ordinance, if Roe v. Wade is overturned, and we had some discussion about that last time, it's opening the door to taking away other rights. My right to privacy is not going to be threatened by that, nor is yours. But it's a great political stance to take, because it makes people afraid, and they have to vote for someone that they feel is going to protect them. But the reality is, none of our other rights are going to be taken away. And this is not even taking away women's rights. It's changing the law to a state level. And for us to come in then and tell us that our policemen can't uphold the state laws because we want to be special, and we think we are, I mean, I just feel like you are making the decision to create a bubble that not even necessarily most of your constituents want, with disregard to what our rights are. We have rights too, not just you guys. And we have a right to tell you that this is a bad decision on all levels. It's not helping women, it's thwarting our police, you're hogtying the police department. I just, and I think it sets a precedent, what if you decide that it's okay to mercy kill when we get old? It's okay if the doctor gives you a little bit too much morphine because it's making you comfortable. But the police can't prosecute that. I mean, it's, you're opening a door here to all kinds of equivocations and a very slippery slope where you're not really considering the whole picture. I just, I'm so upset. I cannot even express to you how distressing it is and how immoral it is to be making It's really disappointing, and over something as important as human life, that we would go down this road. I just think it's tragic. I really hope you reconsider before you take the vote. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment?
I'm Liz Madden. I live at 313 Creek Drive in Radnor, so I'm a Radnor Township resident. Can you hear me? Oh, sorry. This is better? Yeah, okay. So I'm Liz Madden. I'm at 313 Creek Drive in Radnor, so I'm a Radnor resident. I want to thank Commissioners Abel Jones for voting no at the introduction of the ordinance, and Commissioner Fahy for not voting when ordinance 2022 was introduced. To those commissioners who voted yes, I want to point out that you are in violation of your oath of office to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The applicable section of the oath reads, "Every elected and appointed official of the township and every police officer of the township shall take and subscribe to an oath to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania." The Reproductive Rights Ordinance that you approved in its introduction forbids police officers from conducting any investigation, making any arrests, filing any charges, cooperating with any agency or department, which includes agencies or departments like the Attorney General's Office of Pennsylvania, of the State of Pennsylvania, and the United States of America. Those of you who propose this ordinance are in violation of your oath of office. And now that you've been advised of that violation and sacred trust, your oath of office, and if you vote to approve ordinance 2027-07, you will be effectively in noncompliance with township requirements for holding office, and you should resign immediately.
Hello, my name is Laura Geist. I live in East Vinson Township in Chester County at 54 Wade Drive. I wasn't sure if I would say something, but I do want to say a couple of things. Somebody else mentioned Kermit Gosnell creating a gross miscarriage of medical malpractice in Philadelphia. Let me just say that, in general, the only and main reason that most women, ninety-three, ninety-five percent, get abortion is because it is legal. There are so many men and mothers of pregnant women that have coerced women to have abortion. I have spent thirty years sidewalk counseling and crisis pregnancy counseling women, and I see that happen. Do you want Radnor Township, Chester County, Pisa Delaware County, Pisa Montgomery County to become the human trafficking of unborn children, the pathway in Pennsylvania? You want to fight against a truth that's finally coming out through this potential judgment from the Supreme Court? You want to fight against that and make this be the pathway for human trafficking of both sexually trafficked women, are very often compelled to have abortions by their pimps? There are people who are victims of incest, who they go to Planned Parenthood, the Planned Parenthood wipes away the evidence of the incest, and then the women are used still. Do you want Radnor Township to be part of that horrendous history of what abortion has done to the United States of America since 1973? I don't think so. I don't want Chester County to be participating in it, and it would be terrible if you guys betrayed, especially you women, if you betrayed fellow women who are often compelled to have abortions against their conscience and against their heart, their mother's heart. I've seen too many women who regret their abortions, who are grateful for thankfully having healing through post-abortion and helpful ministries. And I've seen too many women who thank us for saving them from the abortion decision at the last minute and have held their babies. Don't do this to Radnor Township. Don't do this to Chester County and Montgomery and Delaware Counties. Thank you very much.
It's Liz Madden again, from Creek Drive in Radnor. I just wanted to give you a copy of your oath of...
Liz, hi, excuse me. This is one comment.
I just wanted to give you a copy of the...
This is one comment period. We will have other comment periods throughout the night. I don't, Liz, we don't need the copy of the oath. You can leave the stack there, we can pass them down. Is there any other public comment at this time? If not, I will move on to the consent agenda. Yep.
Hello again. I am Rita Finley. I'm at 309 Midland. I spoke a few weeks ago. I really do pretty much agree with everything some of the others have said in opposition. So I'm really not going to get up here and try to, you know, repeat all that to you, you know, a pro-life argument. I'm certain I wouldn't change anybody's mind at this time. What I'm trying to say to you is, please understand, your constituents, please understand that we are a beautiful community. We are a community of neighbors and friends that raise each other's kids, that help each other when they're sick. I have so many pro-choice friends, and I get along with them so beautifully. You know, to conjure up this image that there may be an eighteen-year-old who's, you know, trying to get an abortion, but a police officer is going to put his, you know, arrest her, this horrible sight. If that ever happened, every pro-lifer I've ever known in my entire life would be furious at the police. That doesn't happen. So stop, stop the scare, the fear, all of that. It doesn't, we don't want it in Radnor. I understand that nationally, it's very politically advantageous to try to separate people and split people up for political gain. We don't want that in Radnor. I love my pro-life friends, I mean, my pro-choice friends, neighbors. We work together, but please don't try to pit us against each other on this issue in Radnor. Please don't try to separate us about, "Do you support the police? Do you not support the police?" We all support the police. Let them do their jobs. Please don't make this a hot, you know, some sort of hot-button issue for Radnor to maybe get national attention for something political, I don't know, but I'm telling you, everybody I've talked to, we want to, we want to work together in this Radnor community, we want to get through these difficult topics, we don't want to be divided on this. Please don't do this to our beautiful committee. Please vote no on this. Thank you very much.
Not seeing any public comment at this time. I am going to move to the consent agenda, where I will ask if there's public comment on any issue on the consent agenda. I'm not seeing any. Is there any issue on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to remove and discuss? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have moved past the consent agenda, and we are now moving into our business agenda, and the first item on the agenda is the ordinance 2022-07, which is the adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 67 of the ordinances of Radnor Police Department to provide for enforcement limitations regarding bans of certain reproductive health services. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. We are going to, again, hear public comment. For anybody who was not able to speak before, or if you did, you have another option, opportunity to do it here. Before we do that, like we did at the last meeting, I'd like to allow every commissioner who cares to make a statement to please do that now. At our last meeting, when we introduced this ordinance, I moved in order of wards by starting with Ward One through Seven, out of some fairness, I guess, to the guys on the ends. I am going to move to ask for comments from Ward Seven through One. So Commissioner Fahy, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Maroney. So I have a fair amount of comments, and I'll do my best to move along quickly. This is a political thing. This is a, and as a pro-choice Democrat, I think that this is, as was stated before, turning neighbor against neighbor. And I believe that this is for a one-issue candidate who is running for the 168th. So I stated that this is political theater. There are more important issues that affect both Radnor, the Radnor residents, as well as the residents of the Commonwealth. But some of those issues, they're not as inviting, provocative, controversial, I hate to use this word, but sexy, as something like abortion. It's a hot topic conversation, people like to talk about it. It really fires people up on both sides. And again, it's pending neighbor against neighbor. So why is there no talk about the Pennsylvania's $2.52 billion budget? Maybe the pros and cons of outsourcing, I don't know, the Pennsylvania turnpike? We should be talking about ways, how do we protect our most medically fragile seniors and children, ways to overcome hunger, hunger issues for those struggling that can't afford medicine, or can't afford food, or having trouble putting gas in their car, getting to work, single parents that just are struggling. But instead, we're focusing our time and energy on abortion. Now, again, this is a provocative topic, it's a controversial topic, it's a topic that's going to get in the news. So my guess is, after this, I guess the dais will be the new political stumping ground for the gun issue with everything that's going on now. So I would not be surprised if, in a few weeks, or whatever, a gun, which does not have anything really to do with Radnor Township, it's more of a state and a federal issue. Now, the timing is a big concern. For the people that are bringing this up, the author of the ordinance, as well as the commissioner that's running for the 168th, they had years to bring this up. So why wasn't this brought up when they were elected, 2017, 18, 19? They didn't. Why didn't they bring this up after RB, after Ruth Bader Ginsburg died? They didn't. It's only brought up because of what's going on and what this race in the 168 will be a very, very closely contested race. Now, it was wrong when the Republicans did the same stunt with Elaine Paul Schaefer back in 2019, and it's wrong now. Again, it was very similar. The Republicans went after Elaine Paul Schaefer with about three, I don't know, maybe five weeks prior to the election, about something that Phil R. did. They had two and a half years, or a year and a half, to go after that. But they wait until right before an election to bring it up, and that's basically what this board, members of this board are doing now, and it's wrong. Roberta Winters was honored by members of this, of this Board of Commissioners, and that was done the day after a said commissioner won the Delaware County Democrats endorsement. And this ordinance was made public the day after that same commissioner, sitting up here tonight, won the 168th PA Democratic County, the PA primary for the 168th. I mean, if it's a coincidence, fine, but it's just too timely for me. We shouldn't be using the dais as a pulpit... We shouldn't be using the dais as a pulpit to make political speeches. Yet prior to introduction, the Radnor, pardon, the Radnor Committee Chairperson, George Beatty, sent an email stating that he needed all hands on deck and to come out to the last meeting, our last meeting. Our meeting should be for the people's business, not a political campaign stop. And I think it's wrong. I mean, this is not what we were elected to do. We were elected to talk about parks, or streets, or stormwater, or our $40 million budget. Now today, there was the January 6 hearings, and the real story there, the real story of voter fraud is that there is no voter fraud, and I know that sounds extremely counterintuitive. But what concerns me is that this vote is not a vote about voter fraud, or anything like that. It's, if we lose this election, to the people up here, we don't like the results, we're not going to abide by them. This is a definition of their democracy, and their definition of what it means to be if you can get into higher office. Members of this board are broadcasting to the world that if we're unsuccessful in getting out the vote this November, we're just not going to acknowledge the outcome. Well, it sounds like you've become the person that you most fear. It really does. You're taking a page out of Donald Trump's playbook verbatim. This is taking a page out of Donald Trump's playbook verbatim, because if you don't like it, we're just not going to do it. This sends a terrible message, a terrible precedent, and once again, it pins those neighbors against other neighbors. And I am still very, very proud to be a Democrat, very, very proud to be pro-choice, but thrilled that I am no longer part of that Radnor Democratic Committee, or Delaware County Committee. Thrilled about that. As far as the actual resolution, I get that the commissioner that penned this wanted to channel his best Lawrence Tribe, maybe he's trying to create the 28th Amendment, maybe he's going to hope to be the next DA, I don't know. But was this vetted by experts? My guess is no. And I'm no lawyer, but these few paragraphs are dangerous, dangerous to the vulnerable women who are in crisis situations, and many, many of Radnor's staff. So this is the issue that I have with the actual ordinance as it reads. Who would oversee these clinics? It can't be OSHA when it comes to, when it comes down to the employees, because it's not going to be federally regulated. And it can't be the State Health Department, because it's illegal from the state. So it would be up to the county and the township to oversee this. But let's talk about the Delaware County's Health Department. It got started in like April, it's three months old. And then as far as not using any township taxpayer dollars, that's not true, because if the county can't do it, it would fall back to the township. And we don't have a health department anymore, and we would be paying that bill to train and to enforce this. Again, this would create a safe haven, or a sanctuary city for abortion services, and that's something that I don't want. I don't want a safe haven for safe injection sites, which is a whole other issue, nor for, for, for people that are absolutely desperate coming here into Radnor because they, because they're going through an emergency and a crisis. Now, if abortion is an illegal procedure, how will the county regulate it? How will the county know who can and cannot provide the service? And that seems very easy, yes. The easy, the easy thing that we know is common sense, who is a doctor? Doctors can perform this. But let me use an, let me use a one-off, an instance. Let's hypothetically say that Vicodin became illegal from the federal, as well as the state, but it was legal in Radnor. How do we decide who is a pharmacist and who is your street corner drug dealer? It's a very slippery slope, and I don't know if I trust, and we don't have a department, our health department, or the, the brand-new Delaware County Health Department to make these, to police this and to regulate this. There's also nothing about medical professional regulations in this ordinance. If Radnor becomes the safe haven for abortions, you will see many legitimate, as well as illegitimate, illegal, or not illegal, but not safe, back alley type of clinics open up. This was not thought out, and this will thus make women, vulnerable women, less safe. Now regarding staff, I can only say this. If the election doesn't go our way, what I heard is that we're going to defund the police. We're going to defund those who put their lives on the line every day, for you, for me, for our children. I heard about, at the last meeting, about pulling the purse strings and salaries for those who put their lives on the line every day to protect us. Now, my son, and I won't say the officer, my son was at Radnor, at Radnor Elementary today, and a policeman came, and the first thing he said when I come home is, this policeman came with her dog to the elementary school, and we got to see the dog, and all this other stuff. This is their interaction, a six-year-old's interaction with police. It's a positive thing, it's a good thing, and now you are telling me that you want to defund them? You want to make Radnor Township less safe after Uvade, and after all these, 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 these mass shootings? On one hand, oh, mass shootings are terrible, they are, but on the other hand, we're going to defund them if they don't go along with this ordinance. You can't have your cake and eat it too. Now, prior to that vote, the last vote, during introduction, I voted, I kind of abstained or didn't vote based on principle. But this is the more important vote, and I will be voting against this tonight. And a couple more things. I'll just leave it at this, I think that the hubris of a one-page paragraph ordinance that takes precedent over the Constitution, over federal law, over state law is mind-boggling. I think it's pure egotism, and I think to a certain extent, it is an abuse of power. It's an abuse of our taxpayer, our dollars, and our time, and your time, and their time, as well as our consultants that get paid hourly to sit here. We need to, if they want to change this, you need to win at the ballot box, and not by being a poor sport if your candidate loses. It's shameful, 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 shameful. I'll end with this. By voting on this, you're breaking your sworn oath that we all talk to the Constitution. This law creates lawlessness, all while defunding, potentially defunding the police. This law creates lawlessness by potentially defunding the police. And how anyone that lives, works, or studies in Radnor is more safe, they're not. Thank you.
Commissioner Abel?
Well, in lieu of time, I'm going to keep my comments very brief. I voted against this ordinance change three weeks ago, I will vote against it tonight. If the, if the issue at hand is Roe v. Wade, pro-choice versus pro-life, let's have a discussion about it. Let's have community meetings and let neighbors come and have an open forum, and come together, not divide the community. But my, my main opposition to this ordinance change is putting the police and our law enforcement, you know, our, our brave and uniform in the middle of a political issue, a political debate. It's, it's, to me, despicable. We should not be threatening police funding if, if they uphold the law. They take an oath, I watched an oath today of an officer, and he swears his oath to uphold the US Constitution, the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Radnor Township, and now we're just picking and choosing which laws they can and can enforce. It's wrong. If it was the other side that was promoting similar issues and telling law enforcement to ignore their, their national platform, you know, we'd have community members from the other side of the aisle coming in and, and raising opposition. So my, my position is, you know, regardless of what party, what national platform, we should be telling our police to uphold every law, because that makes our community safer. Thank you.
So at the last meeting, when this ordinance was introduced, I made my statement about why I personally think this is such an important issue for our board to take action. I did not predict that we would be legislating around the issue of abortion during my tenure as Commissioner, but now that we are at the precipice of a Supreme Court decision to be announced any day that would strip half our citizens of their constitutional right to bodily autonomy and to criminalize the practice of medicine. Times are frightening, and it's inherent upon us to take action. I am going to use my time to respond to some of the backlash to this bill that you've just heard, because I think it's important to speak the truth and try to drown out the lies and misinformation. I want to make it clear that I have not heard personally from any people in opposition to this ordinance, but I have heard rumors swirling around from a few, but misinformed, who oppose it. So why now? Because we are facing down a real threat to abortion rights. When Ginsburg died, we did not have this real, specific threat leaked from the court. I have heard from some of the commissioners, and in public comment at our last meeting, that even those who do support a woman's right to choose think that it's not our time or our place to take action. If the Supreme Court overturns Roe v. Wade, the immediate impact of the ruling would be to end a half-century guarantee of federal constitutional rights, of constitutional protection of abortion rights, and allow each state to decide whether to restrict or ban abortion. Thirteen states, thirteen states across the country have signaled their readiness to ban abortion by passing so-called trigger laws, preemptively passing laws that will be implemented the day that Roe v. Wade is overturned. Thirteen states, sorry, in Pennsylvania, where abortion rights are not protected under the Commonwealth's Constitution, the door is now wide open for state politicians hostile to sexual and reproductive health and rights to deny abortion care to millions of Pennsylvanians. The Republicans in Pennsylvania have chosen a candidate for governor who has stated that he will end abortions and use executive orders to restrict access on his first day in office. So you ask us why we would act now instead of waiting to see what will happen? Because they've told us what will happen. Because those who would deny a woman a right to choose her own destiny, or prevent a doctor from providing healthcare services to their patients, have already acted. The bills are written, the candidate is selected, and they are prepared to act on a moment's notice to control women and regulate doctors. We cannot afford to wait and hope that things will all turn out okay. That is a weak position to take in a time when we need courage and action. I am proud to take a stand and take action, and I ask those of you who claim to be 100% pro-choice, but still think we should stand down and back off, what do you plan to do? When will you take action? If you have an idea of how to respond, I have not heard it, so what is your plan? I believe wholeheartedly that the ordinance we are about to pass is legitimate. Commissioners set policy for policing efforts all the time to reflect the values of our community. Our police don't stop and frisk, or racially profile, once believed to be effective and permissible, permissible police tactics. We agree with the county law enforcement leaders that we should not arrest people for a small amount of marijuana, even though the law and the books would allow for just that. This ordinance is in a similar vein. It is the underlying issue that now makes these efforts controversial, not the authority to take this action. In a community that is seen, has seen to elect six Democrats to the Board of Commissioners, I'm confident that we are acting for the majority. It is no secret that the Democratic Party platform stands strongly in support of Roe v. Wade, so it should come as no surprise that the six Democrats have all claimed to hold that position, whether they will vote for this bill or not. I have not personally received an outpouring of opposition, and in fact, have heard from more residents who have shared their support, even pride for what we are doing. I am proud to vote yes to support this ordinance, at least we're doing something. Finally, I've heard rumors, and I've heard it said tonight, that this ordinance is somehow an effort to defund the police, or even worse, stop them from acting when someone is in immediate danger. Neither of these accusations are true. I want to be very clear, this does not touch on police funding in any way. The bill states clearly that no Radnor Township assets and resources will be used in the investigation or arrest of a person seeking or providing abortion services. Simply put, we will not ask our police to insert themselves into the private lives of our residents. This does not mean we will cut funding or reduce officers' pay, there is no line item in the budget that refers to the cost of investigating crime and responding to community safety issues. The police are funded like all other departments, with a portion of personnel costs, including salary and benefits, training, supplies and equipment, and the like. Do you know that the payroll budget line for the Radnor Police Department is 52% of the entire personnel budget? They receive 68% of the professional development and training budget. We fund the police to the tune of $10.4 million a year. I have been on the board for two budget seasons, and during this, that time, there have been no statements made in public, no discussion in executive sessions, nor even a casual conversation with staff or board members that have ever even suggested that the police budget should be cut. For those of us who do vote for the budget, and not all commissioners do that every year, we have been consistent in our support of the police department. Just tonight, for example, the consent agenda included an issue to provide them with a new vehicle, with no comment from Commissioner. As for the idea that this ordinance will preclude the police from answering an emergency call, that is also untrue. Nothing in the ordinance would require Radnor PD to ignore 911 calls for help. It does not require them to, it does require them to use their discretion, as they already do, to ascertain whether the call is for someone in trouble or not. For example, if the worst comes to pass, and abortion is banned in Pennsylvania, a Radnor woman calls 911 after attempting a self-induced abortion, we are not asking our police and emergency response personnel to stand down when someone is trouble, in trouble. What it will preclude our Radnor police officers from doing is to follow our resident to the hospital and interrogate her about why she was bleeding, arrest her, and charge her with a crime. That is what this bill does, and I am strongly in favor of it. Right now, in Radnor, no police officer would ever insert themselves into the personal choices of a resident to obtain or perform an abortion. This ordinance maintains the status quo. The effect of this bill will be to remove the Radnor police from an issue that is uncertain, controversial, political, and should never be called for a police response. The idea that anyone in our community or on this board would want to spread misinformation to scare people from supporting this bill shouldn't surprise me by now, but I am disappointed. I only hope that our Radnor police officers and staff can see through that and know they have my support, and the support of the majority of this board, in all the ways that are important. Lisa? Barasik, Commissioner Barasik.
Thank you, Commissioner Maroney. So tonight, I'm proud to stand with my fellow board members to protect a woman's right to make her own choices about her own healthcare here in Radnor Township. Contrary to what has been said tonight, there can be, there cannot be a more important issue than a woman's fundamental right to choose. As we sit here tonight, women have the right to make decisions about their own healthcare. However, someday soon, we know that right may be taken away or seriously diminished. Once that happens, it will be on the states to make that decision. It is time to lead, that is exactly what we were elected to do. Nothing should come between a woman and her healthcare provider and her decision to make her own choice. Tonight, with the adoption of Ordinance 2207, we are taking a preemptive stand against those who are poised to take away a woman's right to choose and insert others into a personal and private decision. Tonight, contrary to what has been already stated, we take our police force out of this very personal, private, and political decision. This is about choice, a woman's choice, a fundamental right. According to the 2020 Census, 52% of Radnor's population is female. What I hear from those dissenting on this ordinance is that it's okay to have our police enforce a law that would take away the fundamental right of more than half our population. For those who say it's too early to enact such an ordinance because we don't know what laws are going to come down, I would argue that it is not too soon, and perhaps it is a naive approach to take for the women who live in our township. This is about choice. Our healthcare providers in Pennsylvania are already prepping for what might come. I've spoken to them, I work in healthcare, I know what they are going through. They are already prepping for how they will care for women in need of reproductive healthcare in the event abortion is banned in Pennsylvania. It is never too soon to be prepared. We know with much certainty, it is not a matter of if, it is a matter of when. And we know without a doubt that with the fall of Roe, there is the potential for Pennsylvania to have some of the most restrictive abortion laws in the country. We know it, because the current legislature has already tried to do it, and that the Republican candidate for governor has stated without reserve that he will restrict abortion in Pennsylvania in all cases, even in the case of rape and incest. This ordinance means that we are not criminalizing Radnor citizens for making healthcare decisions. This ordinance supports our police as they investigate those who perpetrate crimes against women, and is meant to prevent our police from facing the undue burden of turning victims into criminals. This ordinance will allow- This ordinance will allow our police to spend their time finding and building cases against those who should be prosecuted for crimes, not building cases against healthcare providers caring for women. And if our state criminalizes a woman’s right to access reproductive healthcare, it makes the job of our police harder and pulls them from important community policing efforts. This ordinance allows them to continue to protect and serve our communities as they did yesterday and as they do today. As stated by Commissioner Mulrooney, this ordinance does not impact funding for police. This is a damaging and dangerous narrative, which really, and those who are perpetrating this narrative should really think about the times we are living in and the work our police are currently doing. It is a difficult time for our police. In a time when they are called on to protect and serve in more ways, this ordinance allows them to focus on their efforts to protect our residents in our schools, our churches, our community events, not in a doctor’s office. This ordinance is not tied to police salaries or tied to overall funding in any way. Those who are claiming that to be the case have obviously not read the details of the ordinance. Finally, for those who think this ordinance is brought forth to benefit me in some way, well, I am a woman. I’m the daughter of a woman who supports a woman’s right to choose, the sister of a woman who supports a woman’s right to choose, and the aunt of a young woman who should continue to have the right to choose. So I guess, yes, it does benefit me, those who came before me and those who will come after me. So tonight, for the women of Radnor, now and in the future, I will be voting to support this ordinance.
Commissioner Jones? So, I am pro-choice, I am 100% pro-choice. In 1943, my grandmother passed away due to a botched abortion. She had four children, ranging from 16 years old to 10 years old, and her husband was a Pullman porter on the railroad. She was a maid for a very wealthy, rich family. She didn’t have access to good healthcare. She couldn’t afford to not go to work. She had to continue to work. So therefore, she couldn’t have another child. She needed to keep on keeping on. So, access to good healthcare is important for all women. The right to choose what you do with your own body is the right of every woman. My issue, and the reason why I am voting against this ordinance, has nothing to do with the right to choose, it has to do with the fact that I feel that I am not qualified to make this vote. I was hired, or I was elected, to work on municipal issues, to look after our Home Rule Charter, and never in my wildest dreams did I believe I had to vote on something like this, especially when constitutionally, this issue has not, Roe has not been overturned yet. Hopefully, it won’t be. I do also believe, I have faith, and I really hope, that we will continue to have a governor who will veto anything coming down the pike, as Commissioner Borowski alluded to. I think that, you know, we all need to get out there and vote. If this is something that we believe in and we want to protect a woman’s right to choose, we all need to get out there and vote for that. That’s how that’s done. That’s what our democracy calls us to do. And I just don’t feel that I am, I don’t know, I just don’t feel that this is what I was elected to do. It’s been, I’ve lost a lot of sleep over this. I don’t want to divide my community. I do think that, you know, I’ve had a lot of open conversations with other Democrats who feel the way that I do, that this is a constitutional issue, it needs to stay there, we need to do what we can to protect a woman’s right to choose by going to the polls. Yeah, and I 100% also believe that, you know, this is going to go through, this is going to happen, and that’s okay. I really respect the vote of the majority here. But I think that we also need to be really careful with, we need to really look into all of the nuances of this vote. There could be some unintended consequences of this vote, and I really would hope that we would be able to sit down with our police officer, our police officers, our superintendent of police, and flush out what all of those consequences could be. I just think that it’s a really grave decision that we all are choosing to make here, and I kind of don’t like that I’m in this position right now. But, you know how I stand morally, my heart is with a woman’s right to choose, but I’d say on a municipal level, I don’t feel qualified to make this decision right now. If I knew that women were being pursued and arrested and, you know, officers were going in and getting in the way of their conversation with a doctor and going after that doctor and that woman, I would 100% have a different reaction. But that’s not happening right now. And our DA is in a position where he has stated he will not persecute, or prosecute, sorry, prosecute anyone if they are in that situation. And like I said, our current, our current governor will veto anything coming to him, and hopefully, we will have Shapiro, and he will do the same. Now, if anything like that changes, I will, I am supporting, but I would, you know, if I was voting down the pike, if we were making this decision under different circumstances, I would feel differently, but right now, I don’t think that it’s imminent, so we don’t, I vote no for now. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with what Commissioner Mulrooney and Commissioner Borowski said, and I don’t need to reiterate all of the points since I’ve crossed out about half of what I was going to say. But I do need to make a few points. Number one, I’m personally offended that I’m being accused of making a vote that I think is very important, and obviously, the people that are here that disagree with me think it’s very important as well, because one of our fellow commissioners is running for state office. Commissioner Abel said it last time, Commissioner Farhi said it tonight, and I find it appalling. Just wanted that on the record. Why now? Because we’re on the brink of Roe v. Wade being overturned. It’s not Ruth Bader Ginsburg, it’s not anything else. This is new. It’s new in the last couple of months, and it’s probably going to happen in the next two weeks. We are not voting to make Radnor a mini-local Roe v. Wade positive place. We can’t do that. You can’t go against the law. You talked about my oath of office, there is no law. There is, I’m not voting for a law that goes against any state law that is currently happening. Therefore, it is not a violation of my oath of office. We are not defunding the police, another big argument here. We’re simply keeping things, the status quo, and not allowing township funds to be used to get between a woman and her physician. Speaking as a retired physician, I feel very strongly about that. We’re simply trying to save what is a half a century of safe women’s reproductive healthcare, or advocate for that in the limited way we can do on a township basis. As far as getting in between neighbors, Roe v. Wade and the argument about Roe v. Wade is out there. We’re not voting about Roe v. Wade. We’re simply saying we don’t want township funds to be used in this way, as is outlined in the ordinance. That’s about it.
And Commissioner Larkin?
So, I think it’s worth saying that with a few exceptions, mostly coming from this dais, I have been impressed with the civility of the tone to this conversation. Thank you to all of you who have come out to share your strongly held beliefs with us. I really appreciate your time and your effort. Like Commissioner Mulrooney, I haven’t heard much opposition to this ordinance, certainly not compared to hot-button township issues like cutting down trees or closing the ice skating pods. That said, I am frankly distressed by what opposition there is to this ordinance. When passed tonight, and I say when because I’m going to vote yes, it will make no change to policing in Radnor Township, none at all, because today, access to reproductive care remains a constitutional right. Opposition to the substance of the ordinance on the basis of the status quo makes absolutely no sense. On the other hand, when and if Roe is overturned, this ordinance will not legalize abortion in Radnor Township. It will not authorize issuance of permits to build or operate facilities for the purposes of performing abortion, will not make medical equipment to perform abortions available, will not license doctors and nurses to perform abortions. What it will do is very narrow. It will ensure that our township police do not actually jail women who seek abortions, doctors who provide them, or friends and family who facilitate them. The limited scope of this ordinance means that the commissioners and commenters who oppose it are actively campaigning now for their friends and neighbors to be arrested, prosecuted, and jailed, for something that is, right now and for the last 50 years, has been a constitutional right. Ma’am, you said that police don’t arrest people for getting abortions. If abortions are criminalized, and this ordinance is not passed, they will, I can assure you, they will not have a choice. It will be the law, and without an ordinance to stop them, they will have to enforce it. The fact that so many of you have come out tonight to push for your neighbors to be prosecuted and jailed makes me frankly sad. With that preamble, I’d like to respond to some of the arguments that have been advanced. First, I’ve heard a couple of times that this ordinance wrongly politicizes our police, and with due respect to the arguments proponents, this claim is deeply disingenuous. Does anyone here really imagine that the first time a Radnor Township police officer arrests a woman for obtaining an abortion, there will not be, on that day, a protest outside the police department? That there won’t be lawsuits filed against the township, and the officer, incidentally, by Planned Parenthood, NARAL NOW, and the ACLU, as well as every single neighborhood organization in the township that has access to a bar license? If you want to keep police out of politics, then don’t ask them to make political arrests. Sending police officers to arrest women and doctors is the very definition of politicizing the police. Next, and one of the most frivolous talking points that I’ve heard, I’d say I don’t know if it’s disingenuous or just ignorant, but I frankly think it’s one of each, is that we are defunding the police. This ordinance does not diminish the police budget by a single dollar. It doesn’t diminish police salaries by a single dollar. It doesn’t reduce the headcount of our police department by a single officer. It doesn’t reduce the equipment, training, or certifications that are made available to the department. Although both you, Commissioner Abel, and you, Commissioner Farhi, have made this claim, I have no earthly idea where it comes from, and neither of you have offered any justification for it. I am forced to conclude that your position on this is a pure fabrication. Regardless, the complaint that this ordinance will defund the police does not pass the lap test. I’ve also heard a few people say, most recently you, Commissioner Farhi, that it’s not this board’s role to exercise control over the police in this fashion. Again, with due respect, this argument is simply false. Our police department is about a third of our general fund revenues, sorry, expenditures, making policing one of the largest items that this township oversees. We hire, equip, train, and pay for the Radnor Township police. They are top-notch, and I have a high degree of confidence in their skill and professionalism. And I do not imagine that they need me or this board hovering over their shoulders. But their oversight is firmly within this board’s purview. And setting aside my own feelings on this matter for a moment, the township elected six Democrats to a seven-member Board of Commissioners. I am entirely comfortable stating that the people who elected us do not want the Radnor police arresting women for obtaining abortions. It’s worth noting further that the Delaware County District Attorney has promulgated a memo that is substantially similar to this ordinance, confirming that he will not prosecute any potential offenses that this ordinance makes unarrestable. If we do not promulgate this ordinance and we make arrests under an eventual ban, that will be spending your tax dollars to make arrests that are uniformly null-pressed by the prosecuting authority. When and if a federal or statewide ban is put in place, this ordinance will be implemented through the process of regulation and updates to our police manual, in consultation with the district attorney’s office. In short, we are not out over our skis on this issue, we are instead in lockstep with the chief law enforcement officer for the county. We’ve heard twice now today that this ordinance will somehow prevent the police from investigating and prosecuting unrelated crimes if an abortion is even peripherally involved. This, of course, is silly. In the vanishingly unlikely case that a doctor robs a bank while simultaneously performing an abortion, this ordinance does nothing to prevent the police from arresting that doctor for robbery. And of course, our police would do so. The related and far more deceptive claim is that this ordinance will... The related and far more deceptive claim is that this ordinance gives free rein to bad actors like Kermit Gosnell. I remind all of you that Kermit Gosnell was convicted not for performing legal abortions, but of first-degree murder for the death of three infants, the involuntary manslaughter of a patient, and for 21 illegal late-term abortions, together with additional drug and related offenses. This ordinance does nothing to safeguard criminal misconduct like Gosnell’s, which remains capital, and the implication to the contrary is offensive. What makes this particularly objection so painfully disingenuous, however, is that those who favor ending reproductive freedom are in doing so creating an army of Kermit Gosnells. None of us will have to see it, not here in Radnor Township, but in the corners where women can’t afford to travel to obtain abortions, there will be dozens of Kermit Gosnells who will prey on the poor, who because their desperation has been criminalized, will have no recourse to report crimes like his to the police. In short, the boogeyman this argument invokes is one that the far-right will be responsible for manufacturing if a ban is passed. Far from safeguarding horror houses like Gosnell’s, this ordinance creates a safe harbor for victims to report crimes like those he committed, without themselves being prosecuted. If you are genuinely concerned with reproductive health and women’s safety, I expect your support on this issue. Finally, I want to address the contention I’ve heard more than once now that now is not the time, and with respect, I have heard that song before. “Now is not the time” is the anthem of those for whom now will never be the time. But there exists, right now, a threat to a constitutional right. There exist, right now, women who need our support, and there exists, right now, a majority of this board that is willing to stand up for those women and that constitutional right. That makes now very much the time. It’s worth pointing out, too, that Radnor is no longer on its own on this issue. Since our last meeting, other cities across the country have joined us with similar ordinances and resolutions. Cities like Atlanta, Austin, Tucson, and Los Angeles, and I’m sure that there are smaller municipalities that are doing the same thing but are escaping national attention because of their size. While I do not imagine that Los Angeles is following Radnor Township’s lead, the reality is that by building a coalition on this issue, we and our sister cities are creating a safe space for others to follow us. Commissioner Farhi, I don’t know what it means when you say you’re 100% pro-choice, but you, and I wrote this down when you said it, don’t want to create a safe haven for abortion services. I don’t know what it means when you say you’re 100% pro-choice, but you’re voting to let the police force that you oversee arrest women who are having abortions. You say that this is an issue that we should win at the ballot box. We already did. If we count you as a Democrat, the township elected six Democrats out of seven. The voters have spoken pretty loudly. You’re choosing not to listen. The most recent polling out of Gallup tells me that 86% of women support the legality of abortion in some or all cases. This is an issue that uniquely affects women, and I will be... This is an issue that uniquely affects women, and I will be standing with them when I vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all the commissioners for your well-thought-out and very passionate statements. I do respect positions of people who have positions that don't agree with me, but I do want to thank everybody for speaking from the heart. This is the time where anybody who would like to speak public comment on this issue,
Margo Giuliano. There is so much more to women's reproductive health than abortion. It's a very small part. It's a very small part of the health of any human being and of a woman. So to say that denying access to abortion is totally destroying a woman's right to reproductive health is not true. I did not appreciate being told how disappointed my commissioners are in me for having an opinion. That was inappropriate. I have a right to disagree with you, and I have a right to feel that you're not representing me, because obviously you don't. You're not representing my opinion or how I feel, and I should not have to hear you speak with such disdain and disgust because my opinion is different than yours. You've opened this door by choosing to create a law based on something that hasn't happened. When Roe v. Wade was decided, we didn't know as much as we know now. The science didn't give us what we know now about life. It's a completely different issue. The Constitution does not give me a right to an abortion, but it does give me a right to life. We're not even addressing the right of this unborn child. And as human beings, you know it's a child as soon as life begins. But going further, it's very confusing, and for you to say it's impossible to come to the conclusion that you're defunding the police, what are you going to do if the police do arrest a woman who had an abortion? Are you going to fire him? Because then you're defunding him, and that's a threat to them and to their livelihood. I want them to be free to uphold the laws that they've sworn to uphold, and I don't think that we should be playing around with that. You can call it what you want to, and you can call me... I mean, you essentially said, "I'm too ignorant to completely understand the conversation." But I know that what I'm hearing is not consistent with what you're saying. I also agree that you are pitting people in the community against each other, because you're forcing the conversation that many people can have in private without this kind of emotion happening. You're forcing it. So it's your right to feel as strongly as you do, but I really don't think you have a right to be bringing this to fruition on the basis of something that hasn't even happened. I just think... You're justifying your position, which is fine, you have a right to do that, but you're not being respectful of other people's position, and you shouldn't be talking to each other the way you're talking to each other, and you shouldn't be talking to your constituents the way you're speaking to us. That's inappropriate. Women deserve better than what you're giving us. My reproductive health is not going to be threatened. As I said, there's a whole lot more to my health than having an abortion. It's emotional, it's mental, it's physical, but there's a whole lot more, and you're clouding the issue by saying to women, "You're not going to have this right anymore." And furthermore, you're asking our police department to back you up in an ordinance that doesn't even apply to the current law, because you're afraid something's going to happen that you don't like. Maybe, just maybe, you're overstepping your authority, and maybe, just maybe, if you make that decision, you'll find out your constituents aren't that happy with you. I'm just completely amazed. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Pillings, 29, Garrett Avenue. I am absolutely, totally, and 100% pro-choice, to the point that in 1964, a medical decision was made that I would not have my third child, and I had an abortion at Lankinaw Hospital. And in 1964, I welcomed a third child, and he's the light of my life. My issue with this is one of ethics. When we hire a policeman, and I watched a video today, it was done during COVID, so there was no one here, but Mr. White, and the chief, and a judge. And this is a dilemma, because I'm very concerned with what's going on in our country, that ethics and morals are being abandoned. So when a policeman is hired by Radnor Township, he puts his hand on the Bible, and he vows to obey the laws of the United States, of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and of Radnor Township, and so do you. So with this ordinance, how do you balance out their oath to obey the laws of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Radnor Township, but you're asking, through this ordinance, for them to ignore those?
Hello, my name's Doug McCombe, I live in Poplar Avenue. I support this ordinance. I believe that we should pass it. As I said before, the decision in Roe was and is about much more than just a medical procedure. It was and is about the autonomy of women, the women's ability to run their own lives in the same way that men have been able to for generations, indeed millennia. The primary arguments in Roe were related to the ability of women to fully, fairly participate in the economic, commercial, and public life of the nation and of the world. The result of this decision has been an explosion in the participation of women in all aspects of our society. Women now make up half of the people graduating from college. There are now professionals in many fields, as doctors, lawyers, engineers, business leaders, public servants like yourselves. Electoral offices such as senators and governors, not president, but who knows, okay? These have been the results of women being able to plan their futures and control the factors that enable them to fulfill these plans and their dreams. This is a part of the American fabric of society now. There's no doubt in my mind that we need to continue to maintain that freedom for all women. The decision in Roe is actually a fairly balanced one. It asserts that as the fetus progresses from implantations, pardon me, toward the birth that the community, in the form of the government, has an increasing interest in protecting it. Based on that, the Congress and states prohibit it, or are prohibited, from restricting in certain periods of time during pregnancy. Under Roe, states do have considerable latitude in regulating it beyond the first trimester. The Congress and most of the states have adhered to those restrictions until fairly recently. Again, the result of this decision has been women achieving roles in society that would have all been impossible for them as recently as 50 or 60 years ago. It should be noted that as of today, women are not guaranteed equal rights under our Constitution, something that I believe we should be rectified. I believe that Roe should continue to be the law of the land. That is beyond my control, other than by my vote, and by one of the things I consider. That said, if we are truly pro-life, then we should be making sure that every child has the healthy food to eat, a safe and healthy home, has proper clothing, attends good public schools, can address the specific needs, and lives on safe streets, where they can go out and play without fear of being struck by stray bullets. We've heard about that in downtown Philadelphia. If we are really pro-life, then we should be ensuring that pregnant women have access to prenatal, neonatal care, and live in that safe and healthy home for that child until they are an adult, not just worrying about them for a couple of days. Again, the decision in Roe was and continues to be about the autonomy and freedom of women to make their own decisions about their own lives and their ability to contribute to One comment made this evening was that reversing Roe will have no effect on any other rights. There's no doubt in my mind that this is simply not true. The rights that women have to work, attend college, obtain credit, buy houses, and many other activities are only guaranteed by law. They are not guaranteed by the Constitution, and while it's unlikely as hell, they could all be repealed. It is important to note that Justice Alito's draft opinion referred several times to a 17th-century judge who dismissed women as inconsequential, and long history resulted from that, women being second-class citizens for centuries, in many ways, in many ways that shadowed the men in their lives, okay? Our society's overcome most of that, but not all of it. I also disagree with the idea that this be returned to the states. States should not be able to deny or restrict the constitutional rights of the people, such as free speech or free press, the right to trial. These rights are guaranteed to everyone throughout the country, and the states should not be able to restrict or eliminate them in any way. This ordinance will have no effect if Roe is sustained. By adopting this ordinance, we're preemptively protecting our citizens. It's fair, reasonable, and proper that we should do this, and I fully support passing
I'm coming back, Laura Geis, from East Vincent Township. I just want to point out that there's a long history in the 49 and 1/2 years since our country had Roe versus Wade of abortion doctors having mistakes, botching abortions, and women are dying from legal abortions. There is currently a woman named Lisa Pereira who was working in Cleveland at an abortion clinic called Preterm in Cleveland. She's now working in Center City, Philadelphia. She's a very nice-looking and well-educated white woman doctor who killed a young lady named Lakeisha Wilson in March of 2014. She had a malpractice suit against her, and you know what happened? She moved to Philadelphia. She fled. They settled with the family, and she just left Cleveland, and she came to Philadelphia. That's the kind of people who will take money to dismember children. And you guys, I'm telling you, by voting this way, you're preemptively trying to set up Radnor Township as a place for trafficking of abortion businesses. And I'm saying this is kind of gross. It's just gross. The other part of this that I think is kind of weird is the amount of time you're spending wording this whole thing. I don't know what... Did you consult a lawyer? I don't understand. Section 2 says, "If any part of this ordinance is for any reason found to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, such unconstitutionality, illegality, or invalidity shall not affect or impair any of the remaining parts of this ordinance, which shall continue to be fully operative, as if the unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid part has not been enacted." To me, this sounds like a little bit of arsenic in a bowl of punch. This, I mean, if any part of it isn't working, then why can another part work? It's silly. It just seems like a lot of mumbo jumbo created quickly, hastily, to, yes, at just such a time of this, act like you're standing up for a woman's right to kill her children. And I don't think that protecting the police from... I think like you're asking the police to stand down, to go and defend the miscarriage of justice and medical harm that could be happening? Don't you understand that there are women who die from abortions? I mean, somebody just up here gave an example of, well, what if a woman is bleeding really badly from an abortion, that she, you know, did an abortion pill, or I don't know what example you were thinking of, and she was at home and she called 911. You're trying to protect the police from having to be involved in charging the woman. Where on earth is the common sense to refrain from an abortion even happening to get to the point where a woman is bleeding in your township? That should be the first line of defense of protecting humanity, protecting women. I find this just ridiculous, that you guys are upholding the right of a woman to do this to herself, when in reality, there's millions, there's 60, over 60 million abortions, many are repeat abortions. So let's just say 40 to 50 million women since 1973 have been maimed in their heart and their mind from their abortions, and it is not something that they are proud of. I know that some of you are saying, you know, your grandmother died, I am so sorry for that. Who knows if she had been able to have that child, that the whole history of your family would be different. In the meantime, it's not something that we should be protecting as a right to do this to our fellow women. Reproductive health means helping a baby live. What this is, is anti-reproduction. Stop misnomering everything. And this whole thing is just a weird, toxic thing, trying to pull back police from doing what is in their blood to do to protect human beings. And you shouldn't be part of it.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, thank you for a minute. My name's Robert Giuliano, 103 Valley Forge Terrace. I've lived in Radnor Township for 25 years. I taught organic chemistry at Villanova for about 38 years. Apologies to those of you in the medical profession who had to take organic. I have a couple of comments. You know, I wonder where we are. One of our former governors, Robert Casey, wrote an autobiography called Fighting for Life. Something that he said in there really jumps out at me. He says, this is a quote, he says, "I would say in our culture today, there's callousness, a meanness toward the child, a violent streak slowly spreading across society." Let me say it directly. Abortion is the ultimate violence. We worry about the social problem of violence. We read of abandoned children, abused children, children molested or killed, children themselves committing acts of violence. Where did this spirit come from? How has life come to seem so cheap? I believe it's not only possible, it's inevitable. If a child in the womb, the most innocent thing on earth, is not safe, then who is? If as a nation we don't revere that child, that innocence, what will make us revere any life? As a nation? As a township? I just, I'm just shocked and astounded by some of these things. Another person, a pretty famous woman, spoke about this in '94 at a national event, and what she said was, she was a Nobel laureate, she won the Nobel Peace Prize in 1979. What she said is that the greatest destroyer of peace today is abortion, because it's a war against the child. If we accept that a mother can kill even her own child, how can we tell other people not to kill one another? Any country that accepts abortion is not teaching its people to love, but to use any violence to get what they want. And this is why the greatest destroyer of love and peace is abortion. That was said by Agnes Bo-Yadu, otherwise known as Mother Teresa. It's just really disappointing, and I, as others have said, I don't feel represented here by the commissioners, and some of what she said is actually kind of insulting to the people in the audience, and one of the speakers making the assertion or the connection that somehow women are held back because they can't have abortions. Seriously? Don't we have a Supreme Court justice with something like seven children, two of them adopted from Haiti, one who's handicapped, but held back because abortion's not available? I don't think that connection is logical. But it's just upsetting to a lot of us, and is it right for Radnor? Are you going to bring peace and respect for life and reverence and help to women and children by passing something? children by passing something like this? Really seems unlikely, and it's kind of sad. That's all I'll say.
Other public comment?
Yes, this is Liz Madden again. I just have a couple of comments. For one thing, I don't understand where Commissioner Larkin is coming from. The ordinance clearly says that the police would have to stand down about investigating anybody that provides abortion. Clearly in the ordinance, that's there. So in terms of opening the township to the likes of Rosinell, is a possibility, and you wouldn't be able to stop it. The other thing I want to talk about is that the ordinance provides police from... prohibits police from cooperating with the state in enforcing abortion restrictions on human beings less than six months gestational age, the age after which ending their lives would be illegal, according to Roe v. Wade, because they couldn't survive on their own. Not only is the measurement for preserving life arbitrary, because even after birth, babies can't survive on their own. They need somebody to feed them, to change them, to bathe them, et cetera. Since then, science has enumerated the development stages of preborn human beings in weeks. In fact, 70 scientists filed amicus briefs to that effect in Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization, the current case before the Supreme Court. Five to six weeks, a human heart begins to beat. Eight weeks, the human being begins moving in the womb. Nine weeks, all basic physiological functions are present. 10 weeks, vital organs begin to function, hair and fingernails develop. That's it, 10 weeks. 11 weeks, the human being is capable of moving freely in the womb. 12 weeks, the human being takes on human form in all relevant aspects. 12 to 15 weeks, the human being feels pain. Radnor Township's ordinance allows abortions up to 24 weeks. That's 12 weeks after the baby can begin to feel pain. Well passed when preborn babies take on human form too. Most abortions after 15 weeks use dilation, curative, and evacuation on preborn children who feel excruciating pain as surgical instruments crush and tear them. And this is barbarism, and this is what you're going to allow. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
I'm a Radnor resident. I'm here to say two things. We all accept that Roe is about to be overturned by the Supreme Court. There are a lot of members who were put there specifically for that purpose. So it's going to happen, and we've been put on notice what that could mean by looking at some of our fellow states. You look at Texas, you look at Oklahoma, where they're having people pay bounties to turn in their neighbors, where you're arresting women, you're arresting doctors. These are laws that have been passed and will become fully effective once the Supreme Court overturns Roe v. Wade. We also know what our governor has said. And so what I think we're doing here with this law is we're sending a message to Harrisburg that there will be overwhelming resistance to making criminals out of doctors and women and pregnant women who make difficult decisions about their own family, their own health, their own body. This is a preemptive, get-the-word-out message to Harrisburg. Secondly, there are a lot of people who stood up here and talked about killing babies. Now, science has told us a lot about human development, about when gametes get together and form, when an egg is fertilized, they form a zygote. Not a baby, not even a fetus, they form a zygote. And then when it becomes implanted in the uterus, it's called an embryo, and it goes through weeks where it has... It divides, it forms a morula, it forms a blastocyst, and eventually it begins to have specialized cells. And somewhere along there, different religions, philosophies, and individuals decide that this is no longer not a baby, it's a baby. People who are anti-abortion often want to consider it a baby from the day of fertilization. Well, I respect their right to do that and to live their lives accordingly. But in my country, we have separation of church and state. We respect each individual's right to make certain philosophical and religious decisions independently and not to impose their belief system on others. And so I think that that's really what's at stake here, that people who think abortion, who are opposed to abortion, are trying to impose their belief system on others. Nobody is forcing anybody to get an abortion. This simply allows people to have their own say over their own body based on their own belief system. So I urge you to support this and to send a message to Harrisburg, and maybe in some small way, it'll prevent the laws in Pennsylvania from becoming as onerous as some of our sister states. Thank you.
Marita Finley again, Midland Avenue. Thank you all for your time. I am a very respectful person of other people and of their opinions. Again, I wanted to say, Commissioner Jones, I really applaud you for your humility. I think it's kind of sad that in this forum and what you are elected to do, you even feel like you should give your personal feelings on this topic. It's really inappropriate. It's not called for. But I really respect your humility in saying, it's not what I was elected to do. So thank you so much. That showed real strength, real courage. You know, again, and a woman in the back very eloquently said, this is an ethical question. It just is. We respect you to do your job. We are not stupid. How can you sit there saying that this is not, you know, a little bit of political theater, a lot of back and forth? I agree with another woman, the way you speak to each other is horrible. It's very disappointing. It's embarrassing. And it's just, we deserve better. We really do. We want to know you're working together to make our community safer, stronger, better, better schools. You know, I hear so much discussion about, we know this is going to happen, and when it happens, if it happens, this may happen. You know what's happening right now? There's a massive crisis in teen depression and suicide. That's happening right now. Like, I want to hear a lot of discussion about that, what we're doing as a community to really, really try to figure this out for our kids, because they deserve better. Families deserve better. That's happening right now. Commissioner Larkin, your tone is so condescending. It is so outrageous how you speak to us, your constituents. Like, maybe you just don't understand what's going on here. We know what's going on here, and we don't like it. So don't speak to us like we're stupid and, you know, let me explain what women really need. I have three daughters. You really think I don't care about reproductive rights of women? Are you sort of really going to lecture me on if I was really pro-life, what I would do? That's not appropriate for this.
Please make your comments to the commissioners and not to the other audience, please.
Look, we can do better. Name-calling. And what you should do if you were this, can we please stick to the business at hand? Please keep this community safe, support our police, and let them do their job. You know, figure out what's going on in schools, figure out what's happening with violence. But please don't lecture us on this issue. We're very well informed. I would never assume to lecture you and to try to change your mind on a two-hour meeting. Please don't do it to us. Talk about the issues that matter, the issues that we care about, things that are happening right now. It's an ethical discussion. Do not open this door to divide this community. Please, I'm sorry it's going to be passed. It's a mistake, and there will be consequences, and they will not help the families of Radnor. I'm sorry.
Final call for public comment? I'm not seeing any. I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No passes. Thank you. And at this point, we will take... I'm going to make a motion for a five-minute recess. I hear a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We'll be back at 8:35. We'll be back at 8:35. Yes. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. So the Planning Commission did recommend approving version B, which is as it was introduced. Then the recommendation was to consider future amendments within the next month or so of four suggested items that they had. I would like to take a look at those a little bit further, but if the board, it would be on the next agenda to consider that amendment for this board with some changes as the Planning Commission outlined, and then it will be sent to the Township and County Planning Commissions in subsequent months.
Yeah, even if we get it up for the next one, it'll still be September before we would be able to get anything done anyway.
September, October, more than likely, because we're down to one meeting a month for July and August. So if it's reintroduced, or if it's accepted for review, then it gets pushed to probably the August Planning Commission for the Township and for the County, and then back for the Township Port of Commissioners in September.
Just wanted to get it queued up.
Excellent. So we will have this topic again at another meeting after you've been able to review the Planning Commission recommendations. But as we're passing it today, it's the same as the introduction language that we saw at our last meeting.
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance. Oh, good. Thanks. We've got people here waiting for that one. Appreciate you sticking around. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Moving on to ordinance 2022-08. This is an introduction amending Part II General Legislation, Chapter 145, Contractors of the Code of the Township of Radnor by adopting responsible contractor requirements for township contractors. May I hear a motion?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
And John Rice, would you like to lead us into this?
Sure. I can start on this, and Steve and Melissa Khan and I have been over this over the last couple of months. But this ordinance would provide some criteria for all public works projects that don't currently exist, for any projects in excess of $25,000 or more, except for emergencies. There's actually three components here. There's a contractor responsibility certification, and this would become part of the whole bid package that the Township puts out on any public works projects. So you have a handful of projects on the agenda tonight. This wouldn't apply until this gets advertised and adopted. The criteria for the responsibility certifications in Section 145.9, some of these already exist in the Township's bidding requirements. This pulls them all together into a single document. This ordinance will be uploaded and part of the Township bids once it's in effect. It essentially requires contractors and their subcontractors to meet certain standards of responsibility, and to also financial responsibility, and also eliminates anybody that would be bidding on a project where they had been subject to a lawsuit, or they had defaulted in previous projects in other municipalities. It does provide for more administrative review in terms of projects that come back in that are bid out. It steps through what's required in the contractor certification and the subcontractor certification, responsibility certifications, and requires certain training be done by organizations that would be bidding on Township projects. For example, there has to be OSHA-approved training for all craft labor. The firm, successful bidder, would have to participate in apprenticeship program. These are things that already occur in a lot of municipalities. These are not new requirements for municipal contracts. It's gonna be new for Radnor to some extent, and I think contractors, most contractors that are of any size are familiar with these requirements, because they're already complying with them in other municipalities. So it's up, ordinance is up tonight for the board's consideration to move forward and to be introduced. If the board introduces this, this would be advertised then for a public hearing for your next meeting in July. And then it would take effect within 30 days after that. Steve, do you have any additional thoughts or comments on this?
Thank you, Solicitor. So in going through it, there's some very important changes, and I commend the Solicitor for adding them in, which gives us a deeper dive in reviewing the contractors as far as going back three years, to see if they had any other name, or if they were any other entity. So I'll work closely with Melissa Khan. We do have some work to do, some considerable work upfront in incorporating this into our bid documents, which we'll be sending to the Solicitor for his review, come back to us, and in the end, this ordinance, if so passed by the board, would take effect a month after the next meeting, and we would be ready to go by that time. So there are some very good items in here that I think will help us get quality contractors. As the Solicitor noted, there is an apprenticeship program requirement, there's OSHA training, so there's some good things in here.
Is there any other staff comment? Is there Commissioner comment?
So I just want to quickly thank Mr. Rice, Mr. Norsini, and Ms. Khan for working on this and putting it together. The, you know, I think that it sets forth parameters and safeguards that will protect the Township as well as bring us some excellent quality work on our projects. So thank you very much for your work on this and for bringing it forward.
Additional comment from commissioners? And is there public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Move on to Resolution 2022-68, authorizing the award of construction contract B22004 for the King of Pressure Road and Eagle Road-Pine Tree Road Intersection Improvement Project to RoadCon, Inc., to include contingency and construction inspection and services in the total amount of $1,877,776, to be funded from the proceeds of the 2019 general obligation bond. May I hear a motion?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks. Mr. Norsini, can you tell us about this?
Thank you, Madam President. So just a few notes for the board. This is, this project is the recipient of a $1.3 million MTF grant, which reduces the draw on the bond fund. And also, really, this came about, Brian Urie from Cabrini approached the Township about this grant. So this is a great partnership. This is Radnor Township, Cabrini University, and Eastern University on this project. So aside from the grant proceeds, we're also gonna be splitting the costs three ways. So this project includes intersection improvement, lane widening, new signals, storm sewer work. If you ever drive down King of Pressure Road, there are some big sinkholes that our guys fill in all the time because the storm sewers are so deteriorated. So this is a, I recommend this as a good project for the Township.
Thank you. Do we have any Commissioner comment on this?
Just a quick question, because I know that this was gone back and forth several years ago. So the out-of-pocket expenses is gonna be, what, around 500, after the grants and after Eastern and Cabrini and everybody helps pay, about $500,000?
No, it would be probably, and again, included in this, so I'll say roughly $300,000 to the Township, which is pretty good for a project of this size.
How long do you think this project will take? I mean, it just looks massive on your plan.
So the project itself isn't a complicated one, but where the, what we're running into, and I think that two of the commissioners know about Montrose and County Line, is the signals. So the mastarms and poles, every month, we get told 20 weeks, 24 weeks, 30 weeks. So we're gonna get a certain amount of this project done, and realistically, it would probably be the beginning of Q2 2023 because of that.
Thanks.
Just a quick question, Steve. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. As we're going through that, and I know that there are issues with like the mapping, with like Oderusio Park and the address and all these crazy things, is there any way, because you have a lot of bridge strikes on at that underpass, is there any way that as you're doing this, you can, I mean, was PennDOT acceptable, or can they put something on like the GPS, the mapping stuff of, hey, if you go this way? Because I know that's a big concern amongst many of the residents.
of the 2019 general obligation bond. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks. Mr. Norsini, can you tell us about this?
Thank you, Madam President. So just a few notes for the board. This is the recipient, this project is the recipient of a $1.3 million MTF grant, which reduces the draw on the bond fund. And also, really, this came about, Brian Urie from Cabrini approached the township about this grant. So this is a great partnership. This is Radnor Township, Cabrini University, and Eastern University on this project. So aside from the grant proceeds, we're also going to be splitting the costs three ways. So this project includes intersection improvement, lane widening, new signals, storm sewer work. If you ever drive down King of Prussia Road, there are some big sinkholes that our guys fill in all the time because the storm sewers are deteriorated. So this is a, I recommend this as a good project for the township.
Thank you. Do we have any Commissioner comment on this?
Just a quick question, because I know that we, this was gone back and forth several years ago. So the out-of-pocket expenses is going to be, what, around? Five hundred, after the grants and after Eastern and Cabrini and everybody helps pay, about $500,000?
No, it would be probably, and again, included in this, so I'll say roughly $300,000 to the township, which is, which is pretty good for a project of this size.
How long do you think this project will take? I mean, it just looks massive on your plan.
So the project itself isn't a complicated one, but where the, what we're running into, and I think that two of the Commissioners know about Montrose and County Line, is the signals. So the mast arms and poles, every month we get told 20 weeks, 24 weeks, 30 weeks. So we're going to get a certain amount of this project done. And realistically, it would probably be the beginning of Q2 2023 because of that.
Thanks.
Just a quick question, Steve. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. As we're going through that, and I know that there are issues with like the mapping, with like Otter Riscio Park and the address and all these crazy things. Is there any way, because you have a lot of bridge strikes on at that underpass. Is there any way that as you're doing this, you can, I mean, was PennDOT acceptable? Or can they put something on like the GPS, the mapping stuff of, hey, if you go this way? Because I know that's a big concern amongst many of the residents as well as, you know, they didn't want it to be a, the light was an issue, but that's going to pass. It's pretty, we're past that point. So I think the big focus, and I don't know if there is, anything that we can do to help alleviate the bridge strikes.
So I don't want to speak for Superintendent Flanagan, but we'd had this discussion today. I believe the police, our police, Radnor Township Police Department did contact Waze and Google Maps and request that they note that there's a bridge. About a year or two ago, we met with a gentleman who represented a trucking collaborator, and if these companies pay an additional fee, those mapping systems will tell them the bridges that they cannot go under. But if you just use regular Waze or Google Maps, that's the way to come here, right? Is to come down King of Prussia Road. And bottom line is, it was to no avail. But the police did reach out.
So I guess you need the Waze Gold Package. The standard's not going to.
Correct, or Google, yes.
Got it.
Any other comment from Commissioners? Is there public comment on this issue? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2022-69, authorizing payment for the emergency repair of the traffic signal at Sugertown Road and Morris Road to Charles A. Higgins &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $51,492 to be paid from the capital improvement fund. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Madam President. So the board may recall, we did have a signal fall over at Lancaster Avenue in South Eithin several months ago. So that was the impetus. The board did approve our signal contractor to go out and re-inspect all our signals. And as this has been occurring, we have found defective signals Matson Ford and County Line. One that'll be coming up is Airedale and Lancaster Avenue. We have this one at Morris and Sugertown. So it's great that we did this. We are encountering them, and we're making these repairs on an emergency basis. This is a sizable one because it involves two new foundations and additional work. But I was concerned when the, when our signal contractor called me there, so that's what this is about. And I, truthfully, there will probably be more.
Can I get a motion? I didn't do that.
So moved.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there Commissioner comment?
Steve, what was defective on the signal?
So Commissioner, if you go there, you'll see two conduit that were run underneath our signal pole and through the foundation. And that became apparent as the dirt wore away. So that's not one we can just fix and place. That's one where we have to install a new foundation. We had another compromised foundation on the other side. And then when PennDOT came out, we do what's called a pole spot. PennDOT is requiring us, and again, they, just for everybody to remember, we own, operate, and maintain and pay for everything, but PennDOT tells us what we can do, what we have to do. So PennDOT's having us add a 14-foot pedestal pole as well as two of them and handmade buttons. But that's what occurred. The foundations were compromised.
Okay, so is the one on the corner of La Maison? Is that the one being addressed? Because it.
I think that's one.
Because it's tilted, so if you're coming out of Acme.
Well, that's, that's something I want to address with them. That needs to be rotated, because when you come out of Acme, it's not that it's tilted. I think it's rotated in the wrong direction.
Okay, so that will be addressed?
We'll make sure it is, if we can.
Okay. And then when this project's going on, what detours or what can the neighbors expect in terms of?
There'll just be a lane restriction while they excavate and pour the foundation. Then they leave, and then when the poles are in hand, they come back and drop, and literally drop them in. I don't anticipate any long-term traffic implications from this work.
All right, but you'll notify of the timeline?
Yes, when the contractor, so when the contractor is ready to go do that, I'll, we'll put that out.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it. Thanks, Steve.
Any other comments from Commissioners? And do we have public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Great. And Resolution 2022-70, authorizing the award of the contract for design permitting, inspection, and grant application assistance for the pedestrian improvements at King of Prussia Road and Radnor Chester Road to Gilmore &amp; Associates Incorporated in the amount of $32,000 to be funded from the capital improvement fund. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Great. Mr. Norsini, can you tell us about this one?
Thank you, Madam President. So we met, I met with a couple folks from Radnor Way, and their big concern was getting themselves and their children across the street at King of Prussia Road. This is near the bridge, which we'll talk about in a moment. And a feasibility study was authorized by this board to determine what fashion we could do that. And in that feasibility study, it was determined that a sidewalk along King of Prussia to the existing signal at Radnor Chester and King of Prussia, there would be a crossing there. And then now you're on the other side, and you can go whichever direction you want. So this project does a few things. It provides safe pedestrian access for our residents on Radnor Way. It provides further access to the newly completed Radnor Tap Trail as well as getting from the Tap Trail safely to the train station and Archbishop Carroll and points beyond. So what you have before you here tonight is a design cost proposal from Gilmore Associates, our appointed traffic engineering firm. And in there, at the request of the Commissioner, we have a line item for grant application. So Damon, whatever grant is available while they're doing this design, we have a number in there for Gilmore to provide that grant application for us. So hopefully, we can obtain funds to defer construction costs.
Is there a comment from Commissioners?
Yeah, so this is obviously in Ward 2, and I think it's a great idea. I'm definitely for it. I think it'll be great for these folks back in the neighborhood of Radnor Way to be able to actually get to Radnor Elementary School without having to go up the rickety Septa Steps, which are dangerous at best. And as Mr. Norsini said, it provides a lot of other walking connections around the township and I think accessibility as well. So I'm all for this one.
Is there any other comments from Commissioners? And is there any public comment?
Good evening. My name's MJ Frumman, and I serve as a member of the Radnor Planning Commission. And my family and I, we actually live at 10 Radnor Way. If you've been there, or if you've driven by it, it's a tiny residential street, sort of in the middle of the brandy wine Realty Trust office complex. And despite the fact that there's only 10 residential houses there, our street is growing. We have six children there, all under the age of five. And they're either attending Radnor Public Schools now or they will be attending. But despite living so close to both Radnor High School and Radnor Elementary, in order to do so, in order to actually walk there, we have to cross a very busy street, King of Prussia Road. And according to a traffic study, this road sees about 10,000 cars per day. And Radnor Chester Road, which intersects with that, which is basically at the intersection of Radnor Way, also sees 10,000 cars. So it's a very busy thoroughfare there. As the pandemic is subsiding, people are returning to the office. And the traffic is actually going to get worse. So there's literally no safe way, no safe way at all to cross King of Prussia Road at peak traffic times, which really forces the parents of Radnor Way, and I'm one of them, I'm the one that walks my five-year-old to school. It really forces us to wait and then run across this busy road at this peak time. So if you vote for this, you would actually be voting for improving the safety of the youngest residents of our street. But honestly, it's not just about our children walking to school or us walking our children to school. The township spent millions of dollars for that Tap Trail extension. And we, as we walk to the foot of our street, we can see it, but we can't get to it. Not possible. The extension is beautiful. We just can't use it. Now, also, you should consider the fact that this isn't just about the residents of Radnor Way. There's an office right next door to Radnor Way called KTMC. It's a law office. And the census there lists 94 attorneys. And they have all their support staff there, too. At some point, they will all return. And this is a fairly impactful office in our neighborhood. And this is within walking distance of us, of course. And these folks will be using township amenities. Within the theoretical walking distance are five restaurants. There's the new Penn Medicine Health Center. There's a new gym that's opening up that's replacing the Philadelphia Sports Club. And of course, there's the Radnor Hotel. And in order to access all of these amenities, you currently have to get into your car and drive. And that actually exacerbates the traffic problem that we see in King of Prussia Road. So in summary, to me, this project is a no-brainer. It protects our children and keeps cars off the road. It promotes walkability. It connects probably about 120 people to local amenities. So I urge you to approve Resolution 2022-70. To make this even a little bit longer, I do want to read a letter into the record. And this letter comes from Seth Reiser, who is my dear neighbor, but also the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission. And this letter says, "Good evening, Radnor Board of Commissioners. I cannot attend this evening's meeting, but I write this letter in support of Resolution 2022-70. You know me as the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission, where we work to protect and preserve the township's tree canopy, providing our community with ecological and quality of life benefits. With these proposed, with this proposed resolution, similar impacts will be made for pedestrians. My wife Samantha and I moved to our home on Radnor Way in 2019, excited about the many benefits of living in close proximity to the elementary, high school, and train station. As we lived here these three years, we've come to learn of the pedestrian safety and access deficiencies. With a growing family of five, we will soon be walking to Radnor Elementary with a stroller and our now-three-year-old and 10-month-old daughters. Currently, there's no safe option to cross King of Prussia Road as there is no crosswalk to either side from Radnor Way. And the sidewalk underneath the bridge is too narrow and unsafe for a stroller. We would also love to enjoy the new Radnor Tap Trail, but currently, there's no pedestrian or bike route to get there. This project would benefit so many, not just residents of Radnor Way, but the entire local community. We're in full support of Resolution 2022-70 and pedestrian improvements. Sincerely, the Reiser family." Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Great. Moving on to Resolution 2022-71, authorizing the award of contract for, is that the one I just did? Pardon me. No, sorry. Thank you. Authorizing the award for the contract of contract for design permitting, inspection, and grant application assistance for the King of Prussia Road Bridge Over Height Detection System to Gilmore &amp; Associates Incorporated in the amount of $39,000 to be funded from the capital improvement fund. May I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And Mr. Norsini, can you lead us in?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you once again. So, and I'm going to use round numbers. I believe over the last 11 years, we've had over 120 bridge strikes at this bridge. It's been a long, long process. We've discussed many options. This is economical. It does not involve infrared beams or anything along that lines. It's a passive system. Basically, there will be a mast arm like you see for a traffic signal. And coming down from that will be a sign that lists the bridge height. And if you're taller than that, driving a truck, you will hit that sign. And that is the tactile sense to tell you, do not continue, do not go under the bridge. It's not a guarantee, but that's the plan. This was implemented in Western Pennsylvania, and at first, PennDOT was hesitant. But I had a good meeting with them about a year ago, and they're like, we're fine with this. So we met, they gave us some very specific parameters they'd like to see. This contract, like the previous one, based on the Commissioner's request, does include a line item for a grant application. Whatever grant during the design process that comes available, Gilmore would prepare that grant application, and we would appear before you, most likely, before it's submitted for the resolution. So it's $39,000 for the design. And I, this, I think the last bridge strike was just several, a few weeks ago. So it's ongoing. It hasn't gone away. And this is one method of dealing with that. And so we request that, I request that you respectfully approve this design contract.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Comment, Commissioner Myers, do you want to start with that?
Sure. Again, this is a Ward 2 issue, and it's probably one of the most prominent issues in Ward 2, not being a terrible stormwater ward. As Mr. Norsini said, about once a month, a truck will hit this bridge. Sometimes it peels the top of the truck right off, and you'll have the truck on one side and the top of the truck on the other side. Tends to block traffic for hours at a time. And given what we were just saying about the number of, this is right down the street from this crosswalk that we were just speaking of. The number in traffic of cars that go by, it's just a disaster. And I'm sure MJ could tell you that he can hear it from his house every time there's one of these bridge strikes. And that doesn't even get in at all to the safety of the Septa Amtrak Bridge itself. So, I mean, they are big beams. Hopefully, the trucks aren't disturbing them. But you hit those enough times, and you've got to start to wonder about that as well. So I'm obviously for this. I have seen this once in my history. It was a long time ago when I lived in Boston, and they added these to the entrance ramps to Storo Drive, which is a pretty high-speed main drag down the Charles River. And there used to be several bridge strikes on that road. It seemed like a week. I might be exaggerating. And it basically abated them. So it's a similar system, dangles and bops you and at least wakes you up if you're in a rental truck or something that, you know, is about to hit the bridge. So I'm for this one.
Thank you. Are there any other Commissioner comment? We have public comment?
Thanks for letting me speak again. So as a former Boston resident, I can testify to the effectiveness of this system. But at the risk of belaboring this point, and I'm not going to make my comment. I'm just going to enter Seth Reiser's comment into the record that he provided on Resolution 2022-71. Some of you may be familiar with the YouTube channel 11'8, where there are millions of video views of the tops of trucks being torn off by a bridge in Durham, North Carolina. If you're not familiar with it, do take a look at it. It's fascinating. Commonly referred to as the can opener. This is what this bridge is referred to. This is what I was reminded of the first time we were home and heard the sounds of metal being torn to shreds, horns honking and a road closure while this mess was cleaned up. This King of Prussia and Radnor Station Bridge is just 10 feet, 10 inches, and rips open truck tops countless times per year. Something needs to be done, and this proposed project is a great first step. We're in full support of Resolution 2022-71 and the over height detection system. Sincerely, the Reiser family. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes. And moving on to, sorry, Resolution 2022-72, authorizing the award of the contract for inspection and construction administrative services for the South Wayne Flood Reduction Project to McMahon and Associates in the amount of $145,000 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. May I please get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Norsini, can you tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So anybody who's, everybody saw the groundbreaking at the South Wayne Stormwater Management Project. Thank you, Commissioners, for attending. We're very excited about this. So QCI is our appointed inspection firm, although that is not an exclusive contract. So this project, I was able to get it to start sooner than we anticipated, and unfortunately, QCI was not able to meet our needs at that early time period. So this group, McMahon, was the construction manager and inspector for the tap trail. And we were very happy with their work. They provided a proposal. They actually started the day the project started, understanding it was a time and material basis, unless the, hopefully that the board would approve this, and then it all rolls into this proposal. So this is about 100,000 for inspections, and the other 40 is some of the administrative portions of the contract. And if you want to look at it this way, the, this is almost double the cost of the tap trail, and we had the same service, probably to a greater degree than we have here. So I think it's very much warranted with a project of this magnitude, and we're very happy with the inspector we have on site and McMahon. So I respectfully request the Board of Commissioners approve this contract so we can finalize this with McMahon and Associates.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any comment from Commissioners? Sure?
Thanks, Steve. So if we knew that we were going to pay 145,000 for this, why didn't we put this in the bond? I guess, or can you speak to that? I know you kind of did. I just, it's just not registering here.
So this project is funded, this is funded from the Stormwater Fund. And when we came to you for award, we came to you requesting the $4.1 million award for the contractor, 10% for inspections, which is actually $400,000, 20% for contingency, which is $800,000. So from a budget standpoint, we are well within the budget of the project. This is here before you because it's over $25,000, and we need board approval to do so. So it, the cost of inspections was included in the award the board passed. This is specific to McMahon because it's 145,000.
I'm still, it's still just not, not registered. I just think if it's that material, material of a number, that should have been in the, in the bond?
So there is no bond for this?
No, no, no. It should have been in the initial bond when we were, that was voted upon.
It, it was. So.
So why is, then why is there?
The amount of inspections was in what you approved. So the board approved $4.1 million for construction. You approved $400,000 for inspections. And you approved, approved $800,000 for contingency.
Got it.
You approved a sum for inspections, right? You didn't approve this specific company. I brought them in when I did, found out that QCI couldn't meet our need. And that's why we're here before you, because it's over $25,000. It's 145,000 contract, and procedurally, we need to get the board's approval to do that.
So Steve, if I'm hearing you, this is important to come in front of us because we had to switch contractors. So it wasn't, this particular contractor was not considered when we approved the large?
So the original inspection was for QCI. It was our appointed firm, and that's all included moving forward. Since I switched, I need to come before this board for permission.
Understood. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Borowski, yeah?
Steve, I just want to know how's the project going?
They're creating quite a large hole right now. So in about, yes, you did. Yes, you did. So in about two, I think somewhere at the end of June, June 28th, the actual stormwater management underground structures will be delivered, and, or concrete arches, which you'll see a picture of on the sign, which will be mounted shortly, we hope. I have to thank Tammy Cohen for that. So it, it is moving along. I think, so right now, they're moving 500 cubic yards of earth a day. As this, as the material becomes available, you'll see it ramp up. And our Public Information Officer has some really cool things going on, on the site with the camera, and it'll be really neat. We'll be able to show people.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Is there public comment on this issue? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, nay? Okay. Passy and Ansley. Thank you, Mr. Norsini. And Resolution 2022-74, amending volunteer firefighter stipend to include emergency medical service volunteers. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Rice, is this, Mr. Tate? Somebody going to speak to this?
I can lead in quickly, and I'll hand it over to Ms. Amy Lacy, who did the bulk of the work on the resolution. This is an amendment to a resolution that was adopted by the board in October of 2021, providing the guidelines and the stipulations to, to give a stipend to volunteer firefighters at Radnor Fire Company. And at the board's request, this has been revised and amended. I'll let Amy go into some of those details.
Good evening, Commissioners. So as Mr. Tate said, this is an amendment to Resolution 2021-112, which authorized a $1,000 stipend to volunteer firefighters serving, serving in Radnor, or servicing calls in Radnor. At Commissioner Abel's request, the amendment in front of you for approval now includes volunteer EMS that are also servicing calls within Radnor Township. We did work with Joe McGuire from Radnor Fire Company on the eligibility criteria. He is here tonight with, to answer any questions related to that criteria, but that's what's in front of you for your approval.
Thank you. Chief McGuire, would you like to come up and answer some questions?
First of all, Commissioners, I appreciate the stipend that was given to the volunteer firefighters of Radnor, Bryn Mawr, and Brumall Fire Companies. And when we did this resolution, it was my intention right from the get-go to include our volunteer EMS people, because we do have those people who service the township as well. When the wording came out, it came out as volunteer firefighter. I asked, I called down here and spoke to personnel down here to see if we can include the EMS people. And I was told the census says specifically volunteer firefighters. We couldn't do it. So that's what prompted us to, to sit down with Bob and Amy to try to work something out to include the rest of the members of our fire company. We're the only fire company servicing Radnor Township that has an emergency medical service attached to it. Bryn Mawr does not, and Brumall does not. So that's why we wanted to include all of our members in this program if we could.
And can you tell me how many EMS volunteers you have?
We probably only have, at this point, a half a dozen of them. During the COVID problems, we had a number of them that kind of backed off coming out to do the volunteer work. They were a little concerned about their health, obviously. We had a couple that stayed on and did what they had to do. Recently, we are bringing on at least another four or five volunteer EMS people in the next month or so, and I'd like to have everybody included at this. Now, there's a very high standard they have to meet, and those other members who have been in the past few years who fell below that requirement would not benefit from this this time. But I hope somewhere down the road, we can get those members back in, running a lot of the ambulance calls and the shifts they needed to do. But like I said, it'll take a year or so to get them up to speed on that.
And can you speak to the criteria, like how many out, you know, is it, is it dependent on how many hours are volunteered, the length of service? Can you let us know what the criteria that, that Ms. Lacy referred to?
Sure. The criteria for EMS is different than it is for fire, because you can go on with shift, and you could be there for 12 hours and maybe only get one call, or maybe not get any calls. And other times, you could be there for 12 hours and have 20 calls. So we base it on the number of hours, and it's a yearly requirement that they have to be eligible for this stipend. So I don't have it right in front of me. I think it's 140-some hours a year that they have to put in. I think it's probably about 12 hours a month that they have to do. That changes from time to time. They sometimes will increase it. Some of the people who are there now have one criteria. Newer people coming in may have a higher criteria.
So the purpose of us originally doing the stipend for firefighters was to encourage volunteerism. Obviously, the pandemic has hurt that, and I know that there's a struggle nationwide to find people willing to volunteer as firefighters and now EMS volunteers. Do you, have, I know that the stipend for firefighters has already been implemented. Have you seen any uptick in volunteers? Is the stipend being received in a way by the, the current volunteers to, is it bring, is it working? Is it working?
What it's doing right now is that it's something that we can offer to people when they come in and say that we have the additional support of the township in addition to buying equipment for us and, and other things that, that the township does for the Radnor Fire Company. We can also say now there is a personal commitment to each person who comes in here and volunteers and puts their time away from their families for the community good. So we certainly talk to people about that when they come in, and the people who are already there, seeing that there's a little more appreciation for them, because honestly, being a volunteer firefighter, I can tell you, for the past 40-some years, you don't often hear a lot of praise or a lot of people talking about how, you know, the service that you perform, which is fine, because most of us are not there for that. We're there to make sure that we're out there and serve the community, and, and that's the general feeling. But there is that additional feeling from the members. I know that knowing that the township takes this additional step is really going far, a long way to boost, I guess, boost the morale somewhat around there, which is great.
Does anybody else have any questions for the Chief?
So I just have a quick question. It's great. I know I totally support the stipend for the EMS, but would it be, I mean, is it, so I guess, you know, EMS, it is highly specialized, highly trained. Certainly, our firefighters are as well, but, you know, is, is this going to, you know, are you, are you finding, are you like short-staffed with the volunteers? Like, is this, do you think this is going to, to help? I mean, I'm fine doing it, but do you think it's going to help? Or do you think there's going to be, you know, are there, is there more that could be done?
Well, like I said, I mean, we have the career staff there, but they're supplemented by volunteers. And there were times that we don't have the career staff on site. I can just speak to this past Saturday with the Wayne Music Festival. There were a limited number of career staff there, and we had to count on some volunteers to take a number of ambulance calls during the, the music fest and afterwards as well. So I think it's a positive thing, and it'll continue to be positive for the fire company. And as I said, it can, it's something we can tell these members, look, you're, you're thought of more highly than just coming in here and, you know, doing this, any recognition whatsoever. So it's nice to do that. It's nice to be able to offer it to people coming in to say that we have this, this relationship with Radnor Township. And I know that we've had people come in in the past that liked the, the whole atmosphere in Radnor Township, volunteers that have come in there. And this is one more thing I think that's going to help us not only attract, but to retain some of these people in those positions.
Other questions?
Yeah. I just actually want to give a shout out. Jake, I know that you kind of championed this, so thank you for doing this and making sure that the EMS are included as well as our, our fire. Chief, this, this to me sounds like this is a morale booster for the members of, of the, of the company. And I think that's, I think that's a great thing, because they do sacrifice time away from family, really, and put their lives at great risk as well, especially during the pandemic. Just as a quick, you know, let's throw something against the wall and see if it sticks. If there are any other really low-hanging fruit, so to speak, this is a pretty low-cost, I think, high-reward type of plan or program, I would, I would love to hear it. So please, come, come back in front of this board or give us a call directly if, you know, if something pops up or you have an idea, whether it's you, Brumall, or Bryn Mawr. If we can support you guys, and I can support you guys, I'm always happy to do so.
I appreciate that. We will be reaching out to the board shortly because we had a meeting the other day. We wanted to talk about having a better relationship with the board. I want to invite members maybe individually. I know we can't do everybody all at once, or it's a public meeting. So we'd like to invite the members of the, of the board out to the firehouse from time to time, sit and talk about our operations, so everybody understands a little better how we handle things and things that go on there. A lot of the stuff is behind the scenes. It's not always out in front of the public, so that would certainly be an opportunity for everybody to come out and get to know us better and know what we do. So we would look forward to that.
Love that, Chief. Sign me up.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? Or, sorry, before I let you go, is there any other questions here? Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
And is there any other, is there public comment on this issue? Not seeing any. I am going to call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes. And that concludes the agenda. We'll move to the reports of board liaisons. Anybody like to speak to their, their board or committee meeting?
So I just wanted to let everyone know, I'm really excited to announce that Friends of Radnor Memorial Library have, they have raised $25,000 from their book sale. And Maggie, can you speak to the other portion of where that money was coming from? It was also vendors who?
Sure. It was a little over $10,000 from the book sale and membership fees was the other. It was about nine and change. And then there were some little side sales, and on the, the Friday night of the Friends' sale, they do dealers who have to pay a couple hundred-dollar fee to get in there, as well as membership drive. So it ended up being a, over $20,000 for this last sale, which was just a couple weeks ago. And then we had a little left over from the last time, so we're cutting a check for 25K to the library.
Yeah, and I spoke to Joyce Plattfoot, or emailed with her about it, and she's super excited to get that fund. It will help with their overall fundraising goal for the year. So they're very, very appreciative of it. And also, I'm new to planning, but I want to thank MJ Fruman for being so, he's just been very communicative with me, letting me know what's going on with Planning Commission, and, and trying to open up the, the lines of communication more. So I really appreciate that effort, MJ. Thank you.
Any other reports? Commissioner Borowski?
So I just want to acknowledge the Shade Tree Commission and their ongoing continued relationship, growing relationship with the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society. So currently, the, you may be aware, the Flower Show is happening down in FDR Park. And once the Flower Show is over, Radnor Township will be the recipient of 51 trees that are being currently on display down there. So they will be given to the township, working with Ricky Foster and the Public Works Staff. They're going to go pick them up, and they will be offered out to residents for them to come and get them, and, or I think Public Works would bring it to them. I forget how that's going to work. But people can get free trees, so, and they should be really nice, I'm sure, if they're currently in the Flower Show. So, yeah, and I want to credit Frank Paris and Seth Reeser and all the other ladies and gentlemen on the Shade Tree for continuing to foster that relationship, as well as James Givens, who's offered to help plant the trees. So our Shade Tree Commission is really walking the walk and talking the talk when it comes to replenishing our tree canopy. And thank the residents who will take these trees and give them good homes.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, just a couple things on the Parks and Rec side. The communication boards were installed at Clemecron Park, which is a really good thing for some people that have issues communicating children. And I think that's important, that they are, that they're felt at home in our community. So that's at, that was at Clemecron, and hopefully, and I believe also at Anki. So, speaking of Clemecron and Anki, we are June 19th. I think it's John Fisher, former, was, is it John Fisher, who is the former Commissioner in Radnor Ward Seven, in Ward Seven? He is having the Dan- In Ward Seven, he is having the Danny Ocean Band Play on the 19th. July 4th, I know, again, in Garrett Hill, we're having the parade. Everyone here is invited on this, on the stais, as well as at home and in the audience. Please come. It's a lot of fun. July 8th, we have Ode to Rocio Music Night. That is a lot of fun. I missed it last year, but I heard it's a good time, and there'll also be a guest rap superstar that will be there as well. And then also on June, pardon me, July 20th, we have Night at the Ballpark. That is a fun event, and I'm hoping that we have fireworks as well. Then also, if you want to go to a baseball game, I think the Reading or the Allentown, what is it? Allentown Phillies?
There's, there's one in each town.
Yeah.
There's a Reading, and then, then there's a Lehigh Valley.
If you want to drive up 422 to see a, a.
Would be Reading.
Phillies minor league game, please stop in. There may be some tickets still available. And then finally, just a big shout out to everyone for the Wayne Music Festival. It doesn't get any better than that, so great job all around.
Thanks. The, I will just briefly report that the Environmental Advisory Council has been working very, very hard to draft and refine a plastic bag ordinance that would ban plastic bags. I think that it is almost ready for primetime. I appreciate what they've done, is that they've reached out to businesses, they held open meetings, they have been very transparent about their work on this ordinance. It is something that will be brought forth most likely at the next meeting to have now this discussion with the public, at a public meeting. So I just want to thank them for all of their really hard work getting us to this point. And we will continue to talk about it, look at it, bring it in front of the board, and hopefully, we will be the next community that has some restrictions on the amount of single-use plastic bags. Is there anyone else who would like to report on, as a board liaison? Okay, I will move to new business. Is there any new business?
I don't know if this is appropriate for new business. You can tell me if it is. But we had a town hall about water remediation projects in the Third Ward. Okay, I talked about it. It was last Tuesday, and it was a really good turnout. We had several people here to listen to a presentation given by Carol Engineering that in April, March and April, did a pretty comprehensive study for water remediation on many of the streets, including Midland Avenue, St. David's Avenue, Pembroke Avenue. Those are, that's really the crux of the streets that would be affected by this. And really, they, they looked at every single, you know, possible thing that they could do, and they presented this à la carte menu of everything they can do, from low-hanging fruit items, very inexpensive items, all the way to, you know, really invasive items and very, very expensive items. And so what this allowed the community members to do is to come and listen and hear, you know, a very, a very in-depth, as Steve put it, I wish he was here to, to speak to it, but like 100,000-foot view and start narrowing it down. And, you know, there were pretty, there were pretty some, pretty invasive topics that really got, were rousing the group. You know, people just weren't happy to hear what the, what the, some of the solutions could be, because it would, you know, go into their backyards and whatever. But my point is, we were able to have a really open discussion about what we can do, and we will let people think about the options. And we're going to have another town hall to talk about the next steps in terms of what we're going to eliminate. And then when we get to a place where everyone's kind of in agreement, we would bring it to the board to discuss approval for some of the items that are chosen, so.
Excellent. Glad to hear that went well. Any other new business?
Actually, so Kate Fell, who lives in Beau Pray on Strathmere, is having a meeting tomorrow at 11 o'clock on Strathmere to talk about traffic. Beau Pray is mainly not Ward Seven, but there are about, maybe a little less than half the houses on Strathmere are in Ward Seven. So if you're available and you want to come out and listen, hopefully, we'll have a good conversation. Thanks.
I'll just clarify that the meeting will be at Strathmere, Strathmore and Yorkshire Roads. That's where we'll be meeting. Staff Traffic will be there, as well as Steve Norsini, and we're going to be talking about pedestrian safety. 11 o'clock tomorrow.
Great. Thank you both. Any other new business? How about old business?
This time last year, we talked about sending a scattered sites ordinance to the Planning Commission. So a scattered sites ordinance is to look at ways to protect and preserve our historic sites. There was one that had been drafted many years ago, and that, I shared that at the time at the meeting. And we were going to send it to Planning. And I think what happened is Planning got a lot of things on their agenda, and it kind of maybe fell off the radar. So I just wanted to, I've talked to Mr. Norsini about bringing it back to Planning, but I felt like maybe I should bring it back to this board, because it was a different board that was okay with that before, and I didn't want to just kind of move forward with that without, I think, giving Anna Marie, certainly, and Maggie, an opportunity to know or to weigh in and understand. So many years ago, residents, a group of residents worked on something to, again, address the issues. You know, we have a lot of older homes, a lot of historic sites, not necessarily designated historic sites, but for us, historic sites. And they wanted to put in place some, you know, some various safeguards to help protect that. And we just actually had an incident with a home that's on the Adressam property that's really old, and people were concerned that, you know, someone'd buy it and tear it down or take it and gut it. And so this ordinance could help, you know, provide some guidelines to anyone who's purchasing a home that kind of has that historic aspect to it, or, you know, even some of the properties that the township owns. So we, they put this forth. I guess it kind of went nowhere. They brought it back to me. I said, you know, we talked about it as a board and said we would send it to Planning, and they could kind of take it and work with John Rice. And I know that Newtown just passed something similar. The one that we have is pretty big, and it seems like it might be a little onerous, but we'll let Planning and Mr. Rice and Mary Everly take a look at it and see, you know, what could be done with it. But I just wanted to bring it back and make sure you guys are okay with that, since it was a different board that approved that.
I'm seeing nodding going on for the newer commissioners, and I think since the rest of us have heard this before, I think you have a sense of the board to move forward.
Great. I'll let Mr. Norsini know. And John. Oh, John, you know. Lucky you.
This, this, I think what was discussed was, it would be a zoning amendment, and it would list, there'd be a list of historic resources. It wouldn't be like a harbor ordinance or a preservation ordinance like you would have in a city, like Philadelphia has or Boston has. But it would be a historic resources ordinance, which would apply across the board. So that's, that, that was the concept, I think, that was discussed.
Okay. Any other old business? I will call for public comment at this time.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. Shaun, the concert was canceled. It's on Facebook, and it was canceled by John today.
Hi, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. I wanted to briefly comment on the Planning, Planning Commission version of the garage conversion front yard setback. I didn't want to belabor it for the homeowners that were here at the time, so just bring it up now. First, I want to thank MJ and the Planning Commission for their work on that, their thoughtful consideration and the more targeted approach, and Commissioner Myers for asking it to bring, bring up in July. It is targeted in terms of single-family homes with an attached garage, where the conversion of that garage eliminates the required, puts them below the required number of spaces. One thing I said at the Planning Commission, and I also will bring up at the meeting when it's introduced, is, is possibly amending that to a clause that's very common in a lot of the zoning there, which is that the parking spaces' locations be subject to approval by the township engineer. Because once that trigger goes into place, it's no different than the current ordinance, and they can put them wherever. They wouldn't even have to salvage a spot that would still be conforming. Once they, once the trigger kicks in, they're allowed to put parking anywhere in the front yard. So this would just give, in this case, Steve Norsini, the ability to make sure that where they decided to put the parking was acceptable in terms of the factors of that particular lot, and keep as many conforming spots as possible. Just a preview. Thank you.
And Mr. Gemmer, if you could, if you haven't already, I would appreciate that idea or request to be sent before they bring the ordinance to us next month, because if it's something that the township staff agrees to, I'd like to see it included so we can have the full discussion.
How would you like me to go about that? Just send it to Steve or?
Could you email Steve Norsini?
Or Kevin. Okay.
Yeah, or sort of, yeah, probably Kevin.
Okay.
Both.
I will do that, yes.
Thank you so much. Is there any other public comment, public participation? I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Good night.